Welcome to the June 12 zoning board hearing. We've got one addition, a gender item for... That came in through correspondence from town council and attorney Joseph Antonellis. And this is regards to a name change on a previous permit that was issued, also known with the... The applicant was Bay State Relief. They are asking for a name change due to a conflict with a trademark, I believe. And they're looking at for that name change to be changed over to Milford Medicinals. Now, speaking with Jerry Moody, we have one board member that cannot sit on it. I did not sit on this hearing. We have currently four members that can vote on this, on the name change. I'm going to leave it to Jerry's discretion whether or not I can vote on this. So, what would the pleasure of the board be concerning this issue tonight?
I have no problem with it. I'm fine with voting in favor.
Brian, you have a comment?
Assuming it's the same entity, it's just truly a name change, I don't have a problem with it, but I would just run by Jerry whether or not we need to do a hearing and actually amend the special permit or not.
According to my conversation with him, we didn't.
You didn't think we did?
If that needs to come back to us, then, you know, clearly we can do that, but in my correspondence with Jerry today, he indicated that we wouldn't need to do that.
We could just do that by administrative action?
By administrative action for the name change, correct.
Okay.
And if that's the case, I'll take a motion to change over the name from...
I'll make a motion.
...Bay State Relief by Milford Medicinals.
Medicinals, I make a motion.
Yeah, by Mary, seconded by Joe.
Seconded, aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous of four and one abstention. Okay. That housekeeping article is out of the way. Is there any more other correspondence we have tonight from other business? Anybody else? You know, we have a couple of members absent tonight due to deaths, so our condolences go out to Mr. Casal lawyer on the passing of his death this week. He's truly been a substantial heart of the town hall, and we wish his family our deepest sympathy and thank him for all the services he's provided us for over all these years. Truly, the town of Milford and the town hall will lose a great one with him. With that, we will move over to a 7:05. This is going to be on the application... This is a continued application, I believe, correct? This is on the application of... What's it, Supernova Solutions?
Supernova Solution LLC, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, why don't you come on up, Attorney Burton Ozzy, and see if you can go over the application. This is a continued application. On the panel, of course, will be the four main members and, of course, Brian. Do you want to grab this for me? Thank you. Let me find the hearing agenda. I don't have it in here. Yeah, this is on the continued application of Supernova Solutions LLC of 302 Boston Post Road East apartment, C-18 Marlborough, for a variance of special permit relief as appropriated in relation to a 28,000 square foot, more or less possible, of land located on Mount Pleasant Street, known as numbered as 21-23. In the file, we have some correspondence on the application. During the application process, the applicant was at, "What section of the zoning bylaw do you ask to be varied?" And he indicated it was going to be section 2.5 and a special permit for an extension, alteration, or change of a non-conforming structure or use under the section 3.1.3. In relation to the questions of what circumstances existed related to the soil condition, shape, and topography of the subject premises, which do not generally affect other land in the zoning district, the applicant states, "The premises have been improved by a structure that has currently constructed, consists of a recently reconstructed three-story west portion consisting of two units and an east portion consisting of one unit that has been raised to the foundation. Concerning the question if the variance was not granted, what hardship would be caused", the applicant states, "This requested relief is not granted. The petition would have to remove the third floor from the west portion of the building and the existing structure consisting of two units and convert the third floor to attic space." With that, this did go in front of the planning board, and they reviewed this on April 8, and they recommended an unfavorable recommendation, see town plan a letter. Town plan a letter indicates that the applicant requests a variance for a special permit to reconstruct the three-family dwelling on the subject property. The prior building was nonconforming as to the number of units, front yard setback and side yard back requirements. The prior building was destroyed by fire, but the reconstruction was commenced by the previous owner without the required special permit. Further, the west portion of the building already was reconstructed, contains two four-bedroom units and is three stories in height. Two stories maximum is allowed in the IRA zone. The applicant now proposes to complete the reconstruction of a two-story, three-bedroom east portion containing the third unit. Approval of a special permit would allow for the reconstruction of the three-family dwelling. The variance would be necessary to allow the three-story portion of the building to remain. In addition to the reconstructions of the parking lot and the rear, required site plan approval from the planning board. Therefore, he recommended that a favorable report be voted over to the ZDA. With that, Mr. Burton Ozzy, we'll turn the floor over to you.
I have some packages that might be helpful as I go through this.
Thank you. Can everybody in the audience see this on the wall? Hopefully, our TV audience can too.
It's out of the way.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Burton Ozzy. I'm an attorney here in town, and I'm here on behalf of the petition of Supernova Solution LLC. With me is the LLC's principal, Jose Martin Uso. Again, this particular petition relates to a 28,000, more or less, square foot lot situated at 2123 Mount Pleasant Street. By way of orientation, and there's a copy of a portion of the assessors map, this is the first page of the little packet that I gave you, and the property is highlighted in green, situated on the southerly side of Mount Pleasant Street between its intersections with Beach Street and Hayward Street, or as you travel from Beach Street to Hayward on the right-hand side. By way of history, this property has been used historically as a three-family dwelling. And it was pre-existing nonconforming as to that use and also as to the side and front setbacks. The original structure at some point was destroyed by fire, and the prior owner took some steps to rebuild it. He raised the... This section over here, that's highlighted in blue, to... And then rebuilt that. And then he raised this section over here, highlighted in yellow, to the foundation, and that's the way the property sits today. There are photographs in the packet that show the property from angles as you walk from Beach Street to Hayward Street. And that is how my client acquired title to the property. He bought it at foreclosure in March of 2014 in that condition as left by the prior owner, and there's a copy of the foreclosure deed in the packet. So, the issue in this particular instance is twofold. As stated previously, this west portion of the building was constructed by the prior owner such that it was three stories. The bylaw provides for two stories or 35 feet, whichever is lower, so it was not constructed in compliance with that particular portion of the intensity of use regulations in the bylaw. In addition, we're going to be replacing, hopefully, a pre-existing nonconforming use. The proposal would be to construct that right on the existing foundation so that it would only remain nonconforming as to the side and rear as it had been historically. And there are plans in your packet that show the whole parcel, and then, I think there's an elevation, and then I think there are plans that go from basement all the way up through the building. I have larger plans here for the bigger version.
Okay.
But there was some confusion as to what exactly... I think depending on who in the town hall you asked, what kind of zoning relief you needed, I was getting different answers. So, we're here requesting a special permit and/or variance. I think the town planner feels that the variance is needed because of this part, and then the special permit is needed for the whole thing. I think the building inspector thinks all you need is a special permit to do the whole thing, so... And I think Jerry's might have said that as well, but we're suspenders in a belt and we'll ask for whatever relief you feel is necessary in order to make this work. So, again, the plan would be to preserve what's already there in built and then to reconstruct the third unit, and again, all in compliance with the plans that are included in your packet. After the varying... Whoa, I'm sorry.
Before you set the third unit, how many bedrooms is he asking to put on the third unit?
That's a three-bedroom. I think all the units have historically been three bedrooms, and I think this is sort of a unique situation. I think a lot of times when you see these reconstructions, especially in that section and other... Some of the older sections of town, you know, what you see is trying to put a lot of house on a small lot, but this is a fairly substantial lot, and if you look at the plan, I mean, there's more than adequate space for... To accommodate off-street parking for all of the units. The proposal that's here provides, I think, four units, four spaces per unit, and there's more than ample land if the board feels that that's inadequate to include additional parking. So, it's not a situation where you're really jamming something onto a tiny lot. There really is a lot of space here, and all the parking will be off-street and accommodated on a lot to be built to the back. And I don't think that there was ever a dedicated lot at this property. It's always been a three-family, but I think there was only a two-car garage and maybe a small driveway. This would be the first time that there would be any kind of a dedicated parking area for tenants and visitors on the subject property.
Okay, great. Thank you. Before I go over to the audience, I'll turn it over to board members, and then I'll ask questions of the audience. That way, there, we don't have repetition. If one board member has covered something, the question has been answered, then that way there, that answer could also, in the audience, be taken care of at the same time. I'll start with Brian. Brian, you have any questions?
Is this a new foundation or the existing foundation?
It's all on the existing foundation.
On existing foundation.
Correct.
Do you know what the height of the original building was?
I don't know that. Do you know what the height of the original building was?
No, we don't have data for that.
Apparently, there's no data for that. It was a two-story, and if you look at the pictures, you know, even what's there now is not entirely inconsistent with some of the other structures generally around it. So, as you see, I think particularly to the one, as you face the property to the left, they're pretty similar in height, even with the way this is built. So, it's not something that's horribly out of character in the neighborhood. It's something that's pretty consistent with what you're seeing generally around it.
Okay. Joe?
Any idea was the previous owner ever given like a cease and desist order?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I don't know how he got it up there without someone noticing it.
That's what I was going to say. It seems awful strange that he could build it.
You know, sometimes you see people do things inside that nobody knows about, but this was sort of right out in the open.
Well, three stories, and you know when it was done, when the building was first reconstructed?
About two years ago.
Two years ago, huh?
But again, this owner has only owned it since March of 2014.
Yeah. No other questions?
Mary?
The only question I have, the original house prior to it burning, there were three... It was a three-family?
It was a three-family.
How many bedrooms?
My understanding was that there were three bedrooms in each unit. So, it was three, three-bed... It was three, three-bedroom units.
And you're proposing to do that now?
Well, the existing two have four bedrooms. The proposal for the new one would be three.
So, you're going to have 11 bedrooms altogether?
Twelve parking spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah, as many parking spaces as anyone feels are needed, I would suggest.
David?
What's the square footage of the first two units that were already built?
I don't have... I don't know if I have dimensions on that. Do you know that?
Can you make a math?
Yep. The... Just do my job. The... You don't know what the square footage is?
I don't.
Almost a half, a little bit more than a half of... Then we have before.
No, but what does that mean?
How many square feet? How many square foot per unit?
I didn't know what it was before, so I don't know what half of...
It should be the same that we have now.
I know, but I need... I mean, you are talking a four-bedroom.
Number, 10.
I mean, are the bedrooms...
20, 30, 40 by...
Let me see if it's in the... On the assessors' card.
Why... Yeah, I'd like to know the square footage. Why are you figuring out the square footage? I've got a couple of questions. First of all, this was bought at foreclosure, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so we understand that it's a buyer beware situation, and we know that we've got... So, I know the planning board took a look at this and had a big problem with it, especially the height comments were mentioned to raise that third floor and/or not build that addition. I know those were the comments that came out from the planning board. I have a real problem with replacing something that was pre-existing to something larger. I can see the issue of the height and the cost factor financially of what that would do. I'm not in favor of four bedrooms per unit or even the addition of three. Those are my comments at this point. I'd like to... I'd really like to get what the square footage is per unit. You're putting four bedrooms in each unit. Those units are pretty big.
I think you're working on that now.
Yeah, the thing is, the old construction, they built one and two units, and now they change, built this, and he exchanged even the design, you know?
All right.
The old owner, he exchanged...
So, this doesn't help you?
He doesn't help because he exchanged the side.
Okay.
Where did these plans come from, by the way?
He generated them.
You generated these plans?
Yeah.
Is there an architect? Or you just generated these based on what the building currently looks like?
Yeah, I measure there. I measure.
You generated these?
Yes. I'm a mathematician.
I'm sorry?
I'm a mathematician.
Okay. Does the building department have this plan?
Yes, I showed them.
So, you spent the time, you drafted this, but you have no square footage of sizes of bedrooms, living rooms, bathrooms?
Oh, yeah, I have. It's everything there. It's everything.
The numbers aren't there.
Yeah, then, oh, you mean the math for the numbers for the area separated?
For each unit, how many square feet? How many square feet is each unit?
I can make a math if you give me some time. I can... I can give you that for you.
So, when you bought this, you bought it in its current condition right now?
Yes.
Or then you went and you started work on it?
I didn't touch on the construction because I don't know how that going to end.
Was... When you went to the building department, was there a building permit issued? Have you gone to the building department?
Yes, I went there and I talked with John.
John?
With John, and John told me, "Well, I can give you a permit for you continue the construction right now, as soon as you get an engineer to trafficate the foundation" because it was there a long time, and I got there, so he will give me...
Was there a building permit pulled prior to you buying it? Nothing?
No, nothing. I didn't...
You just built it. So, right now, there's an open cellar hole in there with plastic covering.
Is there rough plumbing and electrical in there right now? There is.
Electrical.
Is there plumbing, rough plumbing in there?
Yeah. It's... The two units is almost done, and usually, when I bring people to see like the estimate, they like it. They liked the work, like the work was very...
I just... I don't understand how you can rough plummet, rough electrical it, and there's not even a building permit issued.
No, the owner before, he asked, he had a permit.
He had a permit.
But I think he didn't follow how the permit was. I don't know how though, because it should be not that high, should be just two stories.
So, the building department did issue a permit to reconstruct that home?
To renew, I think so. Yeah, I think we have, yeah. I have...
So, is this also plastered right now?
I'm sorry?
Is this plastered?
It's my understanding. The inside's plastered, isn't it?
No, inside, we have just the frame and the plumbing and the electrical.
Okay.
So, things could be altered in terms of the layout of that third floor.
Like, if the complaint is about like the numbers of bedrooms, the third floor, like the one that he made extra, we can make like just one big bedroom, so we'll be...
Back to three and three and three.
We'll be three, that's...
So, the third floor will just... Will leave as not being occupiable at all?
Well, because it's two bedrooms on the second floor, so what he's suggesting is you could combine the ones on the third floor with one bedroom, so it would be three, three and three.
Yeah, I think it's even better for that because it's too small, you know, the bedrooms on the second floor. We don't even have one master bedroom for like a big family.
Well, this was the second floor on the two existing.
Okay.
This would be the second floor on what he's proposing to build. This wouldn't go up entirely. Then if you flip over, then it would be one more floor, each of each, as opposed to two ways. If that...
While David's going through that, does anybody in the audience have any comments concerning this particular application? So, you would be amenable to bring the two existing units down to three bedrooms?
Yes.
And those... And how would those be configured?
So, the...
This is the third floor.
This is presently the third floor, so these bedrooms would be combined to one. It would be one bedroom on the third floor. And that's the second... That's the other unit. That's the second unit, so it would be one bedroom on that in that unit as well.
Okay.
But we still don't know the dimensions of the room.
Then each one has two bedrooms.
Each floor's about 570 square feet. So, you're looking at probably...
3,000.
The third floor's a little bit smaller, so you're looking at...
Probably 2,500, 2,600.
No, I mean, for one...
Put the dollar on this.
Yeah, but you're probably looking at like 1,400 square feet for one unit.
Yeah.
The unit's about 1,400 square feet.
1,400, 1,500.
Yeah.
All right.
You know, the hard part about this is it was built illegally, it was bought at auction as an investment, and there's really no hardship here except, you know... You know, there's really no hardship here. I could certainly, you know, I've always been a proponent of, you know, shoving a few bedrooms in the downtown area, you know what I mean? You know, from my point of view, the more bedrooms, the more kids, the more impact to the school, you know, I could see doing these at two bedrooms, these smaller units being at two bedrooms. And I, you know, because it was built illegally, there's no hardship. He bought it at auction, you know, he knew what he was buying, he knew he was buying it as is, so there's no hardship to have, you know, to come in here, you know, always asking for four, but I mean, I could see doing two here, and we've done that before on these small units in the downtown area.
No, I understand your... I would suggest you, from a legal perspective, there is hardship because there was something there that would have to be torn out. I understand your position. Again, you know, this... I think when you're comparing this to some... To a lot of the other properties you see, you're talking about postage-sized stamped lots with a house on it, you're talking about parking all over the place, you're talking about disrupting a neighborhood.
Yeah.
And we're talking about a whole different thing here.
It's a good point that you... There is...
This is not that situation.
It is a big lot in the back, you know, there's a lot of land, you know?
So, this is unique, I would suggest, to a lot of the other rebuilds of multifamilies that you folks see there on a regular basis, because, you know, this is going to be beneficial to this neighborhood. I mean, this gentleman came in, the thing was partially constructed, we got an open cellar hole, you know, for years, it was three bedrooms, they were parking on the streets, they were parking wherever they could park, and this is going to be something that's going to benefit this neighborhood, I would suggest. He's going to come in, he's going to finish it, it's going to be a brand-new building. Again, it really is not inconsistent with the... In terms of size, with the other structures generally around there, there are many multi-unit dwellings in that area, and again, I think it's really significant that all of the parking can be accommodated off-street and enough for however many bedrooms you would put into those buildings, and visitors, and, you know, whatever it is that the town feels is necessary to protect the neighborhood.
Are you going to need to have a structural... An architect finish this out so it's a proper building permit can be issued? Yes. Are you opposed to reducing the three-bedroom unit to a two-bedroom unit?
You mean to be...
On the addition?
To be the total each unit to two bedrooms? No, three bedrooms.
The additional ones you're seeking that's currently not built?
Uh-huh, yes. The third one, the third unit is not built yet.
Right.
And it can be three bedrooms.
No, but what he's asking, would you be opposed if it was two bedrooms?
If you think it's better for the city, that works. We can change the plan for make that two bedrooms.
Again, historically, they've always all been threes.
Yeah.
Okay, and you'll have to have the proper forms of egress parking?
We're going to have to go back to site plan review.
Yeah, you're going to have to go back.
He's going to need a better plan than that. I mean, we're going to have to... They're going to want to see an engineered plan that makes sure the turn radius is all working.
Okay, any other comments? You have your last word, we'll close the hearing before we close the hearing, take it under advisement.
Again, I would suggest to you, from a legal perspective, it's a meritorious petition. I would suggest that he makes out the requirements in the bylaw and the statute for the issuance of a variance and a special permit. Again, I think this really is a unique situation. I think that, you know, the accommodation of parking off-street is really a very unusual thing, and I think, you know, if you allow him to build this as he's proposing, this is really going to be, you know, something that's going to benefit this neighborhood.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the hearing, take it under advisement. Guys, do you want to vote on this right now?
I'm probably...
Okay. All right, all the members, it's the pleasure of the board.
Well, I'd like to put a condition that the units presently constructed can only be three bedrooms.
The new one? The new addition you're talking about?
The ones that are already...
Okay.
...constructed have four bedrooms, correct?
Correct.
Two bedrooms on the third floor.
So, the existing... The existing condition, structure, will have minimum...
No, a maximum.
I mean, a maximum of three bedrooms. By the way, the comment sheet's on here. Anything else? Brian?
I'm fine with that.
Mary?
Okay, with that, are we going to do something with the...
I'd be in favor of the third unit that's about to be built to be two bedrooms.
Yes, me too.
Third unit that's needed for the variance to be constructed shall have a maximum of two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
As far as the parking's concerned, I still need a site plan. Anything else? And of course, the necessary height waiver on the existing main building. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
No, well said. Thank you.
That's the one I printed last month.
Oh, okay. Just, you know, what you can do is take this hearing...
Copy it over.
Yeah, and then put all the board members, it's unanimous.
Sure.
Okay, the next hearing is on the application of Joseph Elliot Ruggiero. Please come forward. I'll pass it over. Why don't you come on up? Please pass this around, you got a pen, love?
I'll put you to work.
Here you go. Thank you.
Yeah, just pass it around to people.
Any board members have conflicts on this one? Okay, all five main members. This is on the application of Joseph Elliot Ruggiero of 163 Purchase Street for a special permit pursuant to sections 2.3 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located on the southerly side of West Street, known and numbered as 288 West Street and currently owned by Harry Onision Trustee. Special permit release is sought to permit the establishment of an automotive detailing facility within a building on the subject property. Thank you. In his application, the special permit is asking the question concerning, is the special permit sought in harmony with the general purpose and the intent of the zoning bylaw? The applicant states the parcel is located across the street from a contractor's yard, car sales, and there is a buyer adjacent to the site. Concerning the question of the applicant, as a proposed use of the premise will not create undue traffic congestion or impaired pedestrian safety, the applicant states the proposed use auto detailing generates a very low amount of traffic, the site currently has two occupied buildings and two vacant buildings, the applicant will be occupying a vacant building. Concerning the question of the applicant, proposed of the use premises will not cause harm to, enable, or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, the applicant states the proposed business will be for an automotive detailing, no auto body work or automotive repair work with any hazardous materials will be performed at the business location. We have a letter here addressed to the zoning board from the planning board, that the planning boards review the petition at the regular monthly meeting of June 3rd, and recommends a favorable recommendation, see town plan a letter. Town plan a letter indicates that the applicant requests ZBA special permit under section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws, and that requires a special permit for auto-related uses in the CC zoning district. The proposed use will be limited to auto detailing and will not include any automotive repair or auto body work whatsoever. The north, northerly half of the rear building is to be utilized for the contractor's office and garage, the front building on the property is for office use and currently vacant. The proposed use appears to meet all the applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw, including the special permit conditions of ZBL section 1.10.1. Therefore, they recommended a favorable report, rejoinder, to the zoning board. With that, the floor is yours.
Good evening, John Nannett with Garian Houlman Engineering, I'm here tonight representing my client, Joseph Ruggerio. He's proposing auto detail business at 288 West Street, which is a building owned by Harry O'Neeson. It currently has a site plan on the property. The building that he is proposing to move into, as if you drive by and look at the building, you'll see a building set in the back with two garage doors, the right side is currently occupied by Harry for his electrical contracting business. He's proposing renting the left side, the building's a two-story building with a garage bay underneath and offices above, so he's going to have his offices above his own garage bed. The only changes to the site that we are proposing is we're adding one handicap space directly in front of the building, right now, the handicap space is located over here in front of this front building, which is now currently vacant, it used to be a daycare center. There is no business in there at this time. I believe that building's vacant, the one to the, to the right, as you look at it, is vacant, and there's also a building in the back that's vacant. We are proposing, if you see, any, any water that he washed his car in, he's proposing a, it's kind of a portable containment mat, and then a vacuum system to recycle the water, so he won't be allowed, the water won't be allowed just to run out and run into the drainage system. Other than that, there's no changes on the site, the site's, the parking's currently striped, the only thing that would change would be the striping of the handicap spaces. If the board has any questions?
Any questions?
Is this the same site that Mr. O'Neeson was going to put the gas station on?
Yes, it was.
Okay. That, that special permit lapsed?
I don't know if it lapses, but he's not doing that, there was a, I think there was a condition on the special permit that he couldn't open before eight or nine o'clock, and he couldn't get any tenants that were interested in doing that, so.
The gas station's out?
Gas station's out.
Anybody else?
Excuse me, yeah, what kind of water supply is there?
It's a pub.
It's a well.
It's a well, right now.
It's a well?
Yeah.
And then drainage is?
There's, whatever drainage is in the parking lot, there's an existing water quality basin right here in the corner, there is a catch basin here, the, the slopes towards the catch basin and empties into the water quality basin before it enters the wetland. The site has already been engineered as a site plan through planning board the first time.
I presume there's, is there chemicals used in the cleaning process?
No hazardous chemicals, though. And, and like I said, the cars will be driven into the, onto the containment mat, which I gave you detail of, and then the, the water that's used is recycled and reused.
Is this the latest new technology, this containment mat?
It's a, it's a, it's probably a little bit cheaper than the most elaborate, he's, this is his first business, it's a small detail shop, one day. It's a, it's a, it's a startup containment system, basically, for a small business, it's, you know, they, you've seen more elaborate ones at Ira Toyota, at, you know, where they actually have a car wash that, that goes through, but he's going to be hand washing the cars, it's not a car wash containment system. But this is a current containment system that's perfect for a small, you know, one-day detail shop.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Anybody from the audience who'd like to be heard on this applicant? If not, we'll close the hearing, take it, please, you have your last word before we do.
I think the, the area that it is in, Plains Automotive is across the street, the tradesman is to the left. Harry also owns this building, which is an office building, it's consistent, the building in the back was built for an auto repair shop, it's empty right now, but it's consistent with the, the surrounding neighborhood. You know, it's, I think it's a perfect location, it's far enough off the street, it's not right up on the street, he's got plenty of parking, he doesn't expect to have 20 cars there at any time, he's bringing a couple cars a day in detailing.
And it's all licensed vehicles?
All licensed vehicle, no unregistered vehicles will be on the site, there's absolutely no repair, no oil changes, no windshield replacement, nothing.
Okay, great, we'll close the hearing, take it under advisement. You have a recommendation from board, any board members?
So I, I make a motion that we, that we approve it.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
I thank the board.
You're unanimous.
Good luck, Joe, thank you.
You have a 20-day appeal period, so please contact the legal department, they'll keep you informed to when you can actually start your process.
Yeah, start handing out those business cards.
Nice to see your first business owner in town, right?
Okay. Moving right along here. Okay, next application. It's on the applicat, application of O'Reilly Auto Enterprises. Put that in that file to the last one, please.
Bill O'Brien, he's just here. You ever watch him on television?
It's on the application of O'Reilly Auto Enterprises LLC. 233, 233 Pasadena Street, Springfield, Mass, for variance of, for Missouri, I'm sorry, for variance of the intensity use provisions of section 2.4 and 2.5 of the bylaw. The bylaw, the parking requirements at 3.4 of the Milford zoning, in relation to a parcel land consisting of 27,307 square feet, located at the intersection of Fruit, East Main, and Hamilton Street. The relief is sought in order to permit the redevelopment of the existing residential dwelling and paving parking lot of the 7,000-square-foot O'Reilly Auto Enterprises facility. In our application, through Bowler Engineering, as the engineer, I think she's attached. So I need a motion to have the applicant, you need a motion to dispense with this reading, and he can explain it?
I'll dispense if it's exactly as.
Exactly as it's written here?
Yeah.
Okay. Before you dispense with that reading, let me, let me read the letter from the planning board, they have reviewed this petition on January, June 3rd, and recommends the following. A favorable recommendation on A and B, and an unfavorable recommendation on C, D, and E. Just for clarity, favorable on A and B, A is, planning board was favorable for a 15-foot building setback free from Ham, from, free from, free in Hamilton Streets when 25 feet is required, and they also approved a 8.8-foot trash enclosure setback from Hamilton Street where 25 feet is required. What they voted unfavorable on is C, D, and E, C being that they denied 25.6% of the maximum building coverage when 25% max is allowed, they also denied reducing pavement requirement to three-inch asphalt paving on standard duty areas where four inches is required, and they reduced the paving requirement to three and a half inches of asphalt paving on heavy-duty areas where four inches is required. Due to the size and shape of the property and the unusual close proximity of Inspection Street, the, they sent this off to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. With that, sir, please renounce your name and state what you're trying to do.
Hi, my name's Josh Swirling, professional engineer with Bowler Engineering, with offices in Southborough, Mass, and I'm here on behalf of O'Reilly Auto and the property owner, O'Reilly Auto is, has a, an agreement to purchase this property, I believe they're currently in their due diligence period to attempt to secure these, these variances, and I can walk through the site plan and just get you oriented with the project. Are you guys familiar with the property, generally speaking? Okay, I have a little aerial overlay that we can just look at very briefly, there's a residential dwelling located here, and then the remaining balance of the property is essentially parking, overflow parking from the auto dealership here. Presently, there's four curb cuts, proposed condition is to clean those curb cuts up, provide some better geometry to them, better control. We have a 7,000-square-foot O'Reilly Auto located pretty much in the center of the property, we have additional landscaping being proposed that doesn't currently exist along the perimeters. The existing building is set back roughly 8.6 feet from the property line, property line along Free Street. We're proposing that the building be located 15 feet from Free and Hamilton, and that the trash be located 8.8. We attempted to locate that trash in several locations on the site, planning board agreed that this is the best spot because we don't want it adjacent to the residential behind us. Right here. And we can screen around that, we haven't done our, our landscape design yet, but we'll be able to screen around that, and we can make it a, a nice-looking enclosure as well. This type of use, one thing that the planning board weighed in their thought process as they were making the recommendation to, to the ZBA, was that it's not a high-intensity use where there's going to be, you know, the types of trash or refuse that a restaurant or something else might have, it's primarily dry box goods that are going to go into that enclosure. So, as it relates to the intensity that's being proposed here, a couple of things that I just wanted to, to run through, obviously, the setbacks, unique that we have three frontages that we're working with here, and again, we did our best to cite the building in a way that minimized the, the encroachments. The 25.6% max building coverage, I just want to, I wanted to point out a couple of other things that might weigh, not necessarily as it relates to justifying the specific hardship for that one item, but as it relates to the massing of, of what's being proposed here, that minor encroachment, or the minor infringement on the max 25%, the .6% is very small in terms of building floor area.
What's that difference?
It's a couple hundred square feet. O'Reilly Auto is attempting to come into this market and, you know, build their standard facility, and they, they don't have many locations yet, they have a distribution center that they're just getting open, and they have several locations where they've gone in line with, with VIP Auto, this is going to be one of the first freestanding stores that would like it to be consistent with their normal construction practices, their normal layout, et cetera, to be a viable business in this market. So the other items that I just wanted to point out that may help with the massing of that .6% is when we look at the, the minimum open space criteria, which is in the zoning table, I'm just going to refer to some of the items that are in the zoning table, the minimum open space requirement is 20%, the existing condition is 11.1, and we're bringing that into compliance at 20.8. So we're, it's not as though we're out of scale with what could be on the lot itself, whether it's pavement or building, et cetera. The other item is the max floor area ratio of five, we're only at .26. So while we could have multiple stories, et cetera, and increase the intensity of the development, we're not, we're just looking for a few, you know, a couple hundred square feet increase on that max building coverage item. The, and I can spend more time on any of these, I'm hoping that you folks can take them one by one, so if I need to present differently in order for that to occur, let me know. The asphalt paving requirement, it's unique that a bylaw actually has a tie to subdivision rules and regs, which is where that item is identified, that you need to have a four-inch pavement section, I think the planning board took that item near and dear to their heart because it's a, you know, it's a regulation that they've developed because, from what I understand, there are multiple locations throughout the downtown, et cetera, where parking lots are beginning to fail. I feel that we're unique in that we've had a geotechnical investigation done with recommendations from a professional civil engineer in the geotechnical field, identifying what the proper depths of asphalt paving are, as well as the full pavement section, including subbase. So it's a costly item to impose, you know, a specific section with there not being design parameters or et cetera established. So the geotechnical engineer said from his standpoint, using all the criteria, the soil conditions, et cetera. Yes.
I'm not voting for that, I'm voting for four inches.
Why don't we take that one off the table? I'll withdraw that request right now. So. In terms of the others, would you like to hear more about any of the other items or about the facility itself?
I, I, I would like to make a comment. Is this, and first of all, is this an acquisition or is this a lease?
I believe this is a purchase, an agreement to purchase.
And they're going to, in a national franchise, is going to squawk over conforming to keep within a building over 200 square feet to get a location like this? They're going to squawk? Walgreens adjust their building size on many locations nationally, and they're going to squawk because they can't reduce their building to 200 square feet? I'm asking a question.
No, I, I appreciate the question, and if this board feels that it's, it's not justified in granting that relief, I've been authorized to indicate that we can reduce the size of the building to meet that requirement.
It's just, it was just, it's a question that, coming to this board and fighting over a half an inch of asphalt is totally ridiculous. International company. That's not cooperation, that's being nitpicking, and, and I had to get that on the table because that's what I see this is happening right now. If they're going to be good neighbors, and they want to have a good business relationship within this community, you've got to work together with stuff like this. Sure. And not nitpick on it. Their presentation in this, in this market, I'm sure, is going to be huge for them.
Absolutely.
It's also going to be huge for the way the site is portrayed professionally, and it should be done right coming out of the box in the first place. So, so that's kind of my brief, quick comment, but I'll, I'll turn it over to anybody else. Brian, you have any other questions?
I don't, I agree, I, I, I'm happy with the recommendation that the planning board gave us, the two dimensional setbacks, but, but not the three, I know you're taking one of them off the table, but they list them as A, B, C, D, V, I'm, I'm okay with A and B, C, D, and E have got to go. No reason, there's no hardship there, there's no reason they can't comply with those requirements.
As Dave mentioned, the building is what, 7,000 square feet?
Yes.
And we're talking what, 200 square feet?
Roughly, yes.
I mean, it's nice to say, yeah, we want a building 100 by 70, but.
Right.
I got, I got the floor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Joe.
But I don't see any need to. But I don't see any need to, you know, it has to, if it was a tremendous amount because there was a hardship or didn't fit the lot, that'd be one thing, but, you know, that's less than what, 1 percent, 2 percent?
Yeah, no, we can make that work.
Yeah. One other thing I'd like to point out, and I've noticed, this is a lot that is currently rented by Nissan.
Right.
All right? And we did discuss it when they were granted a permit. Hamilton Street is a one-way.
Correct.
All right? I would have proposed at that time, but at least now, to negotiate with the owners of the property on the other side of the street that there'd be one-way signs. I know there's one at the beginning of the street, but people are liable to come out of here and not realize that it's one, after, forget it's a one-way street because the only sign is down at the corner of the street.
So I think we could accommodate...
Let me just, let me stop, Joe. I got, I've gotten concerns from the neighbors that live on Hamilton Street that they, what they request is because Hamilton is a one-way street, they would like to see no entrance or curb cuts on Hamilton Street. I noticed that the way that you laid out the plan, you have an in-and-out over here on, what's, what street is it?
Free.
Free Street, and you have an in-and-out here on Free Street. Why, on a building like this, you know, why do you have to have, you know, four curb cuts, four entrances all the way? I mean, I think it's, you know, I would, I personally would like to work with you and try to get this approved, whatever, but I'd like to see the two entrances, in-and-out on Free Street and not see the entrances because, you know, it's, it's, the way this is laid out, you know, you got in-and-out on a one-way street, it's difficult.
So I think we still need to go to site plan approval as well. We can certainly look at that. I think that having the curb cuts is necessary, but potentially some alteration to the flow might work. I hear you on the residential piece, and if you're, specifically if you're taking a left back out onto Hamilton, not that desirable from the neighbor's standpoint. I wouldn't say that, you know, we'd want to totally preclude it because it's, there may be occasion where a resident is going back out to their house after stopping here and picking up some parts. So there might be, you know, there might be some justification to allowing some exits onto Hamilton, and certainly the entrance because it's one-way flow. But it's something that we can certainly work out with the planning board, I would, I would hope.
Having four curb cuts is a lot?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I, like I said, it's an excellent...
I mean, if the building was towards the rear of the property, you'd only need two.
I mean, I would like to see it set back 25 feet, but the planning board said that they're okay with 15. I'd want it 25 feet, so that's a give you there.
The, I presume those are the parking lots in the rear of the building?
Yes.
Those primarily would be for employees?
So there's, that's a great question. In terms of the function of the building, and that might get a bit into why there's four and the building isn't set all the way back against the property line to the rear. There, O'Reilly Auto has both a retail component to the regular public. Storage warehouse is, and it's also for dealer pickups. So if there's an auto dealer in the area that has, you know, six whatevers, mufflers that they're going to go pick up, that storage warehouse area and the door in the rear is where they would go to pick it up. So the spaces back here are both for employees as well as for those dealers to come and pick up their, their auto parts without needing to mix and co-mingle with the more retail component for general public.
Is there a loading dock proposed on this building?
Nope, the majority of the deliveries...
Door.
Oh, no, there's just a main door here.
Okay.
You don't, there's no tractor-trail of deliveries, is what you were going to say?
Oh, I'm sure there's a tractor-trail of deliveries.
Products when stuff's getting delivered.
I think the typical delivery is, they might have some trucks, but I think the typical deliveries that they get are in box vans. I can't, I can't say that they've never had a truck.
I'm very concerned about two-way traffic on the side of Hamilton Street and people trying to take a right and trying to get out of there.
I mean, would you folks be comfortable with the recommendation back to the planning board to evaluate discouraging lefts out onto Hamilton?
It is Hamilton Street, it's not Hamilton Avenue.
We could, we could also make, maybe try and put a condition in there that we can have a one-way in.
Yeah. Like I said, I am worried about Hamilton because people that aren't familiar with the area have no idea when they're leaving there to one-way.
I mean, we could certainly add, you know, some signs, but I think the concern is bigger...
I guess the two curb cuts there is too many.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, certainly this curb cut on the front here on the right is totally unnecessary.
That's their retail traffic.
Yeah.
I know, but they can have a curb cut on the left, I mean, you know, you can have a curb cut on the left here, you know what I mean?
That's one way, the other way.
No, it's not.
Free.
Free's a two-way street.
Yeah.
Free's a two-way street.
Yeah, well, it has been as of today.
Yeah.
I just drove out there, I apologize.
Yeah, it's okay. You're doing fine, you know what I mean, you're doing fine, whatever, it just don't...
No, the curb, the curb cut on the back of the building coming out onto Hamilton Street is probably the least important of the curb cuts. In other words, if, because that's, as you mentioned, that's for employees and delivery.
And it's one-way, it's a one-way street anyways.
I know, I know it's a one-way street, but I'm saying if you totally eliminated that curb cut where somebody couldn't come out onto Hamilton.
I think we need to get them in there. We need to get trucks so that they don't have to turn around in a dead-end parking field.
They need, that's what I'm saying, they need to get them in there. They can go out Free Street, but they need to, he's saying they need to get them in there, that one-way in.
Yeah, I think with proper signs of some type, I thought this when they reapproved the rental for Nissan. I didn't know if there was any posts or anything, but there are posts.
Yeah, but with Nissan, they have the cars parked so you can't...
There wasn't a lot of traffic.
They have the cars parked like this, so you can't go in and out. You can only go Free Street, you can't get out. So they have a block...
I'm not sure I agree with that area. But I did notice after that there are posts, light posts or whatever there are on the other side of Hamilton Street, possibly owned by, I don't know if they're lighting posts or if they're owned by the property owner of the other side, which I think is probably still Marquez Oldie. But afterwards, I thought, and I said, yes, you could put signs there.
So Dave, is there something specific you'd like, your request?
Well, certainly, I'm not, I'm, I want to work with the applicant to improve something here. I'm definitely not for four curb cuts on a set, on a posted size. I mean, it's ridiculous to have four curb cuts. You know what I mean? I mean, I don't, I've seen projects in this town where there's been four buildings and there's only been one curb cut for the whole project, whatever. So I understand it works for them, but it doesn't work for me. Certainly, this curb cut on this part of Hamilton Street, I think, is dangerous.
Yeah.
Okay, people making the corner here and people trying to come out, I think that's dangerous. If I could live with a curb cut, it would be maybe the one back here. But, but I mean, I still think, I still think four curb cuts for one building on 7,000 square feet is excessive.
I'm saying if the building was pushed way in the back, we would have eliminated it.
Yeah, that's what I...
I mean, it, just again, sort of the function of the building...
Well, even if we eliminated the front, if we eliminated the front too, we could actually put a main entrance in the front. And you'd have this traffic here, the front entrance traffic, if you eliminate these two curb cuts, the retail proportion of this can come in and out the front, and then you've got the back. And you've eliminated these two in the front.
Yeah, I don't know how people would feel about having intersection-intersection driveway there rather than having people funnel back out...
Well, it's better than having, having this particular curb cut so close to Hamilton Street.
I mean, I think of...
East Main.
It's like anything on East Main.
I mean, if you want to cooperate and we'll, we can eliminate that curb cut, I think three curb cuts is more inadequate to get what you need.
Well, what, rather than that, what if these were, were enter-only? So you're essentially, you're getting, in my mind, what it is that you're trying to protect, which is, you know, people leaving and going out through the neighborhood. But I think the enter is good for both customer convenience, you're not going to have the conflict that you had mentioned about people taking a left out and people coming up.
How are you going to, how are you going to control that designated traffic? You're going to, are you going to reduce the opening?
Yeah, we can reduce the opening and channelize it and sign it.
And just have, you're going to have to have some, you're going to have to portray to the planning board that you've got some signage that they're going to be happy with.
Yeah, yep.
How do people feel about that?
I'm still, I'm still for limiting it to three curb cuts and not having a curb cut on the front here, on this front, right one here.
And we're eliminating, by doing what I'm suggesting, we're eliminating the movements that...
No, I know, but you can't control someone that wants to jump in their car and go out and take a right-hand turn, or someone that wants to go into the pot lot next door. You can't control that. You know, you can put all the signs up that you want, but that's what people do.
Yeah, I think geometrically, we can make it very difficult for that to happen.
Well, you know, I, I'm still going to say that, you know, I'm still going to say that for a one-use a building with 7,000 square feet, four curb cuts is ridiculous. Ridiculous.
So if we're restricting two of those curb cuts to be enter-only, you're essentially eliminating one of the curb cuts because you're eliminating two move, you're eliminating two exits, which to me is the same as eliminating two driveways, or at least the equivalent of one driveway.
No, I, I, I can make the motion for one curb cut for the whole property, if that sounds better to you, you know what I mean? So if you, I could go one, you know what I mean? It's like, you know...
I, I agree. There's the four curb cuts.
No, I do, um, it's just too many.
Just too many. Yeah, maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's a function of spinning the building. Maybe it's a function of taking, taking the box and flipping it.
I don't think that helps with the traffic flow or the need for rear and front. Because you don't have enough space if you flip at 90 to have parking between, this is too narrow. I mean, what, what I can...
If you want, and again, you know, you're there, you're just about there. The question is, we're very strong on this Hamilton issue of having these four curb cuts, you know, and I get the point, I can see an accident's going to happen on this front one. I think that we're going to, we're going to see that as a no-brainer, and I think that's a big concern with people coming out there and accidentally turning right. And we've got, you know, someone just turning that corner, and we're only about 20-some-odd feet to that entrance. If you want, we can continue the hearing, if you want to kind of work that out with the client and see what's palatable. We're trying to work with it, but you can't, you know, apparently this board's not favoring four curb cuts.
So I guess before we do that, I know, I understand that there's a timeframe constraint in terms of the due diligence period, which wouldn't get me to the next meeting. So I don't know how they would feel about continuing. So I'm going to try it one last time. And if it's, if it's not palatable, I'll have to either ask for the vote or ask for a continuance. I can try, if you guys have other matters, I can try calling the client in between to see which way they want to go with it. But what I, I'm comfortable without their input right now indicating that if you were to condition it so that the two driveways on Hamilton Street are enter-only and that the geometry and signage be such that it truly discourages folks from making an exit there, that's the best I can do without...
I understand, but I still, if someone wants to pull out onto Hamilton Street in the openings, you know, you could put all the signs you want there, but you know, you know, you're going to put the metal things that if you roll over, it blows out their tire? I mean, is that, you know what I mean? I mean, because that's the only way I know of stopping someone from not going through that exit. You're going to put, you're going to put the grates with the teeth in so it blows out their tire if they go out that way?
I mean, I think, what I, what I can show, and I can come around and take a look at this with you guys too, but I can show something that does essentially this.
You can force them into a left turn, but so that they can't get out.
So, so this would be, and actually, we'd be pulling away from...
But you go to all that trouble, I still don't know why you need four curb cuts. I mean, that's my...
And you can do this, you can look at doing the same thing here. We have the trash here, which might make it a little more difficult for trash pickup, but it's...
And again, hear us, the biggest concern is the one up front. That's the biggest concern.
At this point, I, I mean, I can't, on their behalf...
We can vote three curb cuts.
If it's three curb cuts and not enter-only, I'd, I either have to talk to the client or I have to ask for a continuance. So if you guys, if you guys would be comfortable at least tabling us, and I'll try to reach out to the client.
Why don't we, why don't we table, if you want, you want to do that?
Yeah.
Try to table it for 10 minutes and we'll do another hearing.
My, my client is at a, he's traveling up this way actually from home office on vacation with family, so I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to get him, but I will go give it a shot.
Okay, we'll table this for 10 minutes and we'll go to the next hearing. This is on 21, this is Emily Viti, 21 Westbrook Street, is that's on the agenda?
Yep.
Yeah, come on up. How are you? Good, have a seat. Let me read this. This is on the application of Emily Viti of 21 Westbrook Street, Milford Fair and Special Perimeter Relief in relation to a 4,400-square-foot, more or less possible land owned on the northbound side of Westbrook Street, known in numbers 21 Brook Street. Special Perimeter Relief is requested to allow for the removal of an existing garage and the construction of a new 18-by-foot by 14-foot garage with a walk-up loft together with a 10-foot by 12-foot breezeway, mudroom, and other extensions as referred to in the applicant. The variance release is sought to allow certain of the proposed reconstruction renovations on a subject lot closer to the lot lines than otherwise was permitted. By the way, any board members have a conflict on this hearing? Hearing none, we will continue. On the application, the question was asked what circumstances related to the soil condition, shape, and photography subject to the premises, which do not generally affect other land in the zoning district. The applicant states, none at this time, the garage will be two-story. On the question if the variance was not granted with hardship would be caused by the circumstances described, the applicant says, none, just trying to stay in the current residence with a growing family. And then the applicant, the question of the applicant stating, why do you feel a grant of the variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good? The applicant states it would only improve the condition of the home and make the neighborhood look better. With that, the planning board at their June 30 scheduled meeting recommended the following, unfavorable recommendations, see Town Planner letter. The Town Planner states that the property is undersized 4,400-square-foot condo lot with front yard required along each adjacent street. Thus, there are two front yards and two side yards as a condo lot, there is no rear yard. The existing houses are non-conforming as to the front yard setbacks. Specifically, the following variances are required. A 17-foot building attached garage setback from Overley Ave is where 25 feet is required. A three-foot building attached garage setback from the north sideline where 10-foot is required. Nine-foot building garage setback from the west sideline where 10 is required. And nine-foot building kitchen ad setback... building kitchen ad setback from the west side, which is 10 required. 32% building coverage proposed where 25% max was allowed. Due to the small size of the property, they recommended a, Larry Duncan recommended a favorable report be forwarded over to the zoning board. So with that, would you give us an idea of what you're trying to do?
Yeah, so we just want to build a garage with some storage area, like possible expansion later with a breezeway, because it, when you walk into our house, it's like you first walk into the kitchen, there's not a ton of storage, so we, as you heard, have a new baby, so like the car seat and all of that stuff is just sitting in the kitchen, there's no real space to put any of that stuff. So we were hoping that like a mudroom and a breezeway would give us storage space, but also somewhat of an outdoor living space, even though it's not technically outdoor. And then, just to have an opportunity for our, excuse me, for our cars to be in a garage, because the garage that's there now doesn't actually, I, I have a small car, but it doesn't fit a car much larger than that. And with a growing family, we probably would get a larger car at some point. So our, our garage wouldn't even really be usable to us.
So you're proposing something like this? To be, is that what your garage is proposed, it's like a...
Yeah.
Is this what you're trying to do?
Something like that, yeah, not exactly that. It's just an example, yeah, not exactly that.
This looks like it's going to cost more than what the house is going to cost.
That's probably true.
What's the, what's the square footage of the existing house?
1,300 square feet, I believe.
And what's the square footage of the proposed? So you're putting an 18-by-24-foot garage, you want a second story, and then, and then a 10-by-12 breezeway?
Mm-hmm, and they would, yeah, it would be connected, obviously.
What, yeah, I drove by there today. What, what's currently there, if you take a look at the plan that you have in front of you, up here in the corner right, that's where the, there's a, that's a, there's an existing garage there now, it's about eight feet, and it runs right to the back of the property line.
And so we would pull that garage forward, so that we would...
No, you'll be taking that garage down.
Yeah, 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 sorry, yeah, so that garage...
But you're going to be building this monster.
Yeah, and then, well, yeah, sort of, I guess, that won't stay, it's more like a monster than that. But, so we would, the garage that we would build would come forward a little bit, so it would be...
This is the plan that was drafted, correct?
Yeah, it would be more flush with the house. So we would have like one long strip in the back of the house that we could use as, as...
As some yard.
Some yard, yeah.
That you really don't have in that area now.
Right.
And then you're going to, you're going to increase the size of the kitchen? See, I guess, I, I just, it's a very small lot, and it's a lot that you're trying to add to it, I, why do you need two stories on the garage?
Well, I think just because if we were increasing on the first floor, why not build up to the same level that the house is at, so that we could, we only have a two-bedroom house. And I have an 11-year-old stepson who lives there, and now Christopher, who lives there with us as well, that right now doesn't have a bedroom. He's small enough to be with us.
So are you talking about adding a second-story bedroom to the main house?
Um, we're not sure what we would do with it, or if we could somehow figure out a plan with the existing house to create more living space there, and then storage space in the, above the garage.
I, I just, I think it's too much for the lot, I mean, I...
It's all building.
Because it's, because it's two-story, or because of the size of the lot?
No, I just think you're adding on, and you're, I mean, you're, it's a 4,400 square foot lot.
It's a small lot, yeah.
And what you're asking is, is...
We don't have any backyard now.
No.
Have you met with an architect?
No. Because we weren't sure, like, you know, we don't know what we're going to be allowed to do. So I bought the house before I knew my husband, and like it was perfect for me as a single woman, without the yard, there wasn't a whole lot of time I had to spend mowing it. But now that I'm there, and I, like, I love the neighborhood, having young kids, it's access to the parks, the neighbors, we have like wonderful neighbors that, that now I know very well. And just like the library right there, everything's within, I mean, it's right there.
It's a two-story house?
It's a two-story house, yeah.
And it's 1,300 square feet?
Yeah, it's a tiny little house.
You know...
I'm, I'm okay with it.
We're trying to help you here, and that's why...
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I'm trying to warn you that this thing may get so out of control that you may not be able to do this. That's why, when you showed me this, this would be more expensive...
And I think, so, that's a two-car garage, and I think we're looking at like a one-and-a-half.
Right.
A one-and-a-half car garage?
Yeah.
But you're doing a 18...
We don't have any plans either, though.
Yeah.
Right.
I just, I, I don't know why the garage has to be two stories.
Right.
That's, I have a problem with that.
Well, it, it won't even look good in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
It won't look good at all.
I mean, I, like I said, I, I think if you had some plans, I think you, I think you could do a better job of incorporating, I mean, even the way you've got the breezeway here. I mean, I think you could take advantage of doing something that would encompass the whole side of that.
I want to, I, just, just to, here's my feeling, you know, I, I'm trying to help and want to support this. I don't think you understand what this impact is going to be towards what you're trying to do, or what your, and result should be, without at least getting an architect to design something that you're going to be happy with. Because then what's going to happen is, now you're going to get an architect, and you're going to be forced to live within this little envelope. And if the architect has a better flow plan for you, that's going to work better, then you've got to turn around and change everything, and come back. So I'm trying to be helpful...
Yeah, yeah.
And I think we want to help support you to try and get where you want to go, but I think you need to have that vision, that someone's got to show you on paper what it's going to look like, how it can flow better, and maybe this 10-by-12 proposed breezeway, this small section can, can be, can come down, and you can come out a little bit further, and still get the look you're trying to do with the functionality of what you're trying to do, to help you.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're going to be married into these little lines, and then an architect's got to design around them, and it may not flow with what you want.
So, um, I'm just trying to like understand what you're saying. I feel like, right now, our, where our garage is, like you drove by it, right? So you saw the driveway that we have, where the garage is, and then what is, I guess, the front yard, which is somewhat unusable yard space to us anyway?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, you know, it's, I mean, it's only a small little patch, it's like the size of your desk. So to have something in the back behind there...
No, I think what he's trying to say is like, is try to incorporate, I mean, is try to incorporate, so you, 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 you want to have this look like it was built with the house.
Right.
Instead of looking like you stuck this here, you stuck this here, and you stuck that there. And I think you have better use of the space, because like you said, if you, if you go and you want to then build something, you have to stay within these parameters.
Right.
It may not, it may not work as well for you.
Well, and I think, given the, like, the research that we did and what we had looked at for plans, that was the space that we wanted to use for that, like, we had thought about it a lot.
It may be what you wanted to use it for, but it may not be what an architect functional, it may not work.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Because of the condition of your existing home.
Okay.
Do you have a current stone foundation now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's, there's going to be some logistical issues that an architect needs to view to be able to do that. You just can't slap an addition on and expect it all to work.
Okay.
I mean, if you want, I'll support this, the two-story, not now, until I see plans.
So the breezeway piece you would support?
Yeah, because there's no plans, usually you have to command...
Oh, yeah.
It's got to be engineered, we, I mean, has this been engineered by an engineer? Or is this just a drawing?
Well, stamped by, the plan is managed by a civil engineer.
Well, the plan is stamped by a civil, did you have this drawn on this?
Yeah.
By a civil, a civil engineer?
Yeah.
And he came out and engineered the house?
Well, he came out and did the plot, like, he looked at what our...
All four points?
Yeah, like our four points and, and all of that.
And you told them what you wanted to do, and he just plugged in the...
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I can't support a two-story on that.
Not now, not with all plans.
Yeah.
We don't even have plans.
What are, what are the, well, the thing is, what are the plans going to show, though? They're going to show a two-story with the dorma? I mean, you know, I mean, we're supposed to go width, height, and, you know, length, and square footage, that's what we do.
Right, but we don't have that.
Well, there's, she's showing the dimensions of what she wants to build.
Well, she's showing the dimensions, but...
She's got no height.
But if she, you know, this could be, you know, 40 feet high.
That's true.
So, you know, we can, we can put this in conditional and on, conditioning on a, on a set of plans, if she needs to come back and ask for the second story, you know, I think this board will be supportive if, if she's got a growing family that needs this Because there's nothing tying it into the house. Right now, I just see a footprint, there's no plan. Usually people bring in plans of what...
No, I saw, and I recognize I didn't have any of that stuff. Um, yeah, so you guys are trying to visualize it.
We can deny it right now because of that.
Right, right. I mean, I don't, like, it's, you know, I don't know exactly what all of the plans are, but I know that we...
You need to get an architect.
Yeah, well, and so if we had that all drawn up, and we could, like, so we would have to...
He may change it and say, you're, you'd be, you'd get better, you'd get better use of the space by doing it like this.
Okay.
And then it's all tied in, I mean, even with the, with the breezeway, is, is that a closed breezeway, is it an open breezeway?
It would be closed.
All right.
Yeah.
Just on a slab?
I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, I don't think so.
Why don't you have a recommend a, a continuance for 60 days?
Yeah.
For six...
Okay, and then you can come back with something more definitive.
Probably going to need 60 days, and then she doesn't have to go reapply or anything like that.
I agree, I agree.
Or, or if you feel you can do it in 30 days, it can be 30 days.
Well, I'd like to give her time, because she's got to get an architect to be able to get what she needs to get to this board, I think she needs 60.
Yeah, okay.
Because you can tell them exactly what you're looking for, and then they can design a couple of different options for you, and that, it's going to be better for you as well.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. So then the two things that you're looking for are how high that the garage would be?
No, you want to talk to an architect and see, you want to tell them what you want, and have him do, do some plans, the whole thing.
Okay.
He doesn't have to give us a lumber material?
Yeah.
But show us what, you know, you need to know what you want, bring those, I, we don't need to have the floor joists or any of that stuff detailed, we need to see a picture of what, what rooms are where...
Okay.
In coordination with this.
Just, just what you have here, but the exactly what you...
Exactly, okay.
And, uh...
So we'll continue it for what, 60 days?
Yeah.
And if you need more time, just contact jury's office, and then town council, and you can have more time, to give me more time.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you.
All right, you're going to need to sign this?
Okay.
All right.
What is it, the 60 days, this?
That would be the, August 14th, well, that would be the next meeting, yeah, in August.
So can we come back before 60, or like, as soon as we have this up?
Yeah.
We only meet once a month.
We only meet once a month, so if you can, yeah.
Okay.
Because it's continued to that, and we're just going to put...
But you have to let attorney moody, town council, know.
Call town council, and just, if you're ready for the next meeting, then just call town council, and we'll have you on the agenda.
Okay.
Why don't you, you're going to need to sign this?
Yeah.
Because this is the continuation.
Poor kid.
I know, he's been so patient.
Why don't you do this?
Who is that?
Print, print, print here, and then sign underneath.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Great, good luck, yeah, let us know. By the way, do you know this, do you know this person?
The person...
On this plan?
Um, I think that's Darren, who, I think that's like a, um...
His name is Scott, his name is Scott Rogers, he's great.
That builds those, yeah, and I think, right, but they're like pretty bad, aren't they?
Right, he's a great architect, he lives in Upton.
Yeah.
He lives in Upton.
So I think Darren does know him.
Yeah, okay, great, super.
We'll call him, we'll go out your side.
Well, he, he does great work, so he'd know what to do.
Okay.
I don't know if he can do it with your timeframe, but he knows what he can do.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are back on the application for O'Reilly's. Yes, sir?
I was able to get in touch with my client.
Yeah.
He gave me an answer. I just, I want to be completely clear and open and honest, he's not sure if O'Reilly will accept that condition and actually build, but he would like to close tonight and see what he can get, and go up to his bosses and figure out what that means. So, one thing I would like to just identify and show this board is that it was a prior site plan approval that didn't require zoning relief for a 5,000-square-foot building. In that building, there was a restaurant about a third of the size of the overall footprint, and the rest was identified as retail. The, so this went through Planning Board to receive full site plan approval, and I have the Planning Board decision here. It shows four curb cuts, very similar to what we have on our plan. It has, I circled the signage that was proposed for that development, which indicates some of the one-way signs that were mentioned here, and it also... And it also identifies no right-turn signs at Hamilton Street. And from what I understand, that just was deemed not to be a viable development, and was not obviously constructed. So that's my...
And what was this done?
The decision is dated 4/18/2013.
4/18?
2013, so a little over a year ago is the decision.
That's certainly not going to change my...
We need a...
So concerning the items...
Is he still, oh, okay, great.
Could I, could I just enter this for the record?
Sure.
Sure.
Would like to...
I'm the chairman, it'll go through me.
Okay.
And I'll sign it.
Will I give you the actual decision?
Okay. Uh, this is going to be... Okay, what's the, you all set? We, you want to close the hearing, and we'll go, we'll take it, we'll vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? We'll go to the items that, from the Planning Board, which were items A and B, which they approved, and items C, D, and E, which they denied. And, so C requires the 200 square feet reduction of the building, so they'll conform to, C, to go to a maximum building coverage of 25%. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Basically, they're taking the current 7,000 square feet, bringing it down to 200 square feet.
Right.
Okay. So that'll be one, that's approved. We have D and, D and E...
Wait, just one clip.
We're...
We're not approving that.
We're denying that request. We're denying the 26, 25.6, and, and suggesting they stay with the 25% max.
Correct.
And then concerning the pavement...
You're going to deny the 3% and make them, and require the four inches?
Yes, basically, we're denying C, D, and E.
Yeah.
Where four inches required.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of D and E.
That's correct, that's why we're denying it, so it's got to go to four inch.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And...
So we're going to do, we're going to vote on A and B?
C, D, and E.
Okay, and anything else?
Yeah, I'm going to propose a condition that is, that is, is limited to, that this, this curb cut, I guess on the southerly part, I guess we're looking at this plan on the southerly side of the front, on the curb cut, to be eliminated on the front side of Hamilton Street, to be eliminated, and that the curb cut on the back of, of here is entrance only on Hamilton Street, no, no exit.
Okay, so on the, the entrance closest to East Main Street, David, say it again?
Yeah, the, the curb cut closest to East Main Street is to be eliminated.
East Main and Hamilton.
And the curb cut on the rear of the property...
On Hamilton.
On Hamilton Street is going to be an entrance only.
So it's going to be a one-way in.
Okay. That's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Brian, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
No, not unanimous.
All right, you denying that, okay.
Opposed, or...
Okay, so we've got four, four in favor, and Joe's opposed. Anything else? Okay.
Yep.
Thanks for your time.
Anything else? Okay, great, all right, thank you, for the hearing.
It's entrance only, Dave.
One-way entrance on Hamilton Street.
Entrance, in the rear of the building. In the rear, on Hamilton Street.
Okay. Hey, this is, this is on the application of, after one-hundred-and-fifty Lawrence Street Millwood, and three suspendal of thirty-five-dee Lake Street, Oxford, where variance would potentially use the position section two-point-four and/or two-point-five of the zoning bylaw in relation to parcels owned by, on the westerly side of Haven Street, known and numbered as twenty-seven Haven Street. The variance is sought to permit the division of the parcel into two parcels of land, one to contain the existing dwelling, and the other to be available for single-family construction. Both parcels will require variance release in the lot frontage and lot width providing the zoning bylaws. On the application, the applicants, the applicant state what circumstances exist to the soil shape and photography, and the applicant state that the lot originally was cut out of a large parcel with two-hundred-and-forty feet of frontage, with, with the intent that it could be divided into two A and R lots, one to the left to each daughter upon their father's passing in nineteen sixty-six, Route four ninety-five did a taking of part of Haven Street that moved the right-of-way of Haven Street back sixty-nine-point-two feet, reducing the lot's frontage from two-hundred-and-forty to two-hundred-and-thirty-three, leaving the lot six-point-two-eight feet short of the frontage requirement. This taking also pushed the set line, the lot, the set line back on the lot decreasing the total width. The app, if, the question asks if the variance was not granted, what hardship would be caused by the circumstances described below? The applicant states the two sisters had always planned on having a home on the property, not granting the variance would put undue mental and financial stress on the sisters and their relationships, and on the question, state while you feel the grant of a variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good. The applicant states the lots meet the current shape factor requirement, the house setback requirements, and have no extra topography that would cause any drainage problems, they are consistent with the lots in the RC zone. With that, we have a letter from the planning board, they did, they did review this at their Jan, June thirteenth, third meeting, and vote, vote, and a favorable, excuse me, a blah blah, a favorable recommendation of four, with the condition that they take the shed down, and there was one in opposition, the applicant, specifically the following variance are required under Town, uh, Town Planner Larry Duncan's letter, the following variance is required, one-hundred-and-ten feet, point-nine lot frontage is proposed on Lot thirty-one A, which is one-hundred-and-twenty, is required, one-hundred-and-five-point-seven-eight feet lot width on Lot thirty-one A, where one-forty is required, and C, one-hundred-and-twenty-four-point-eight-three lot width proposed, Lot thirty-one B, which one-hundred-and-forty is required. The proposed lot would split, would result in two single-family lots with the existing house remaining, and a proposed lot on Lot thirty-one B. Both proposed lots would exceed the forty-five-thousand-square-foot minimum lot size and comply with the shape factor requirements. With that, floor's yours, John.
Good evening, John, now I'm with Garian Howland, engineering. As David said, this is a lot on Haven Street, close to the four ninety-five, where four ninety-five overpasses on Haven Street. The father passed away approximately, I think, nine months ago, the intent, when the father bought the property, was always to be able to leave a lot for each daughter on his passing. As David read, there was one not in favor of doing this from planning board, and his concern was that he's had other people come in front of him, and they've said that, and then they've split the lot and sold them. I just want the board to know that Kathleen Hearn was not living here, she was living in an over fifty-five, she's already moved into the father's house. The sister is full well, as total plans are moving in next door to her on the lot that we're creating. The lot originally had, at the time the lot was created, there was no width requirement, and there was no Rule of Twenty-two. The lot had plenty of area to create two lots, and it had two-hundred-and-forty feet exactly, so it could be split one-hundred-and-twenty and one-hundred-and-twenty. When four ninety-five did their taking for the highway, when they come, get to an overpass, they always extend that down the side roads about, you know, four, five-hundred feet. So they extended this, this four ninety-five taking all the way down, almost to the edge of the property, and when they did that, it pushed the right-of-way back, which, because the lot lines slightly come in, it made the, the lot slightly less than two-hundred-and-forty feet, so we weren't able to, to split the lot directly in the middle and get one-hundred-and-twenty feet for each lot.
There's a regulation that basically indicates that if the state takes something, it does not necessarily yield it unbuildable.
Right, exactly.
What's the, if you, if I can interrupt you?
Yeah, sure.
What's the Rule of Twenty-two?
The Rule of Twenty-two is the total perimeter squared divided by the area, and it has to be under twenty-two. So what that does, it makes a lot that's wide enough, that you can't have a little skinny piece and come over and have a large piece. So we, we were able, both lots work with the Rule of Twenty-two. You can see they're both oversized, it's forty-five-thousand-square-feet required, the lot we're creating is fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two, and the, the second lot is seventy-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-eight. They, like I said, if they didn't do this taking, we would be able to do an A and R, and have the required frontage. You know, she's going to put a, she wants to put a house near the sister, they're both getting older in age, and they like to live next to each other, it's pretty much what it is. I, I, I can answer any questions. I know they said that the shed would need to be torn down, but I'd like to make it so that they, they would allow them to move it to meet the setback requirements.
That's right.
If the board has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anyone in the audience, board members?
I'm fine with it.
Would, would, the, the, the only thing I'm, I'm just thinking about, if we put a condition that the, that the house would have to be built further back towards maybe the middle of the lot, maybe, so they're not stacked, each other...
Well, they've got their setbacks in it.
What's that?
Setbacks are on the plan.
Yeah, but, you know...
Well, there may be, there, there may be some constraints to that, because I know there are some wetlands on the lot.
Okay.
So we would do the best we can.
Okay.
Conservation's going to have to look at it and see where we can put the house on the second lot.